All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the Belvidere City Council's regular meeting of July 19, 2021 to order. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Brereton is absent. Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter will be absent. Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
A present.
Thank you for joining me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us together here this evening. We thank you for our country. We thank you for our community. We thank you for our freedoms. Lord, we thank you for our first responders and our military service members. We ask that you grant us the wisdom, the patience, and the courage tonight as we convene the business of the city of Belvidere. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Okay, under public comment. Mindy? Just state your name, Mindy.
Sure. I'm Mindy Long. If you don't know me, I'm the new director of the Idaho Public Library. And I'm not here to really kind of push forward any agenda. I just want to give you guys a little bit of information because I don't feel like you've been and gotten the information you've needed on a lot of issues with the library. So I took over on May 27th, and I've been a resident of Belvidere probably since the sixth grade. Been working at the library for four years. And I, the other guy's gone, so he's no longer here. And I took over on May 27th. So I did want to just address a little bit of from Monday's meeting. I'm not here to tell you how you should vote or should not vote, but there's a little bit of misinformation, so I want to kind of straighten that out in the interest of going forward in a transparent sort of more amicable relationship with all you guys in the library. So I know we had some troubles in the past, but those hopefully are all behind us. Alderman Porter, I just wanted to address somebody, you made a comment about the $18,000 increase, pay increase and raise. That is not the case. I started in at a salary of $55,000 a year. That's public information. When I accepted the job, I requested of the library board that my pay be frozen for two years. So there won't be no increase until maybe 2023, if I'm still here. If I'm not here, there won't be another one. So so that's frozen, so I hope that gives you all a little bit of confidence in the fact that I'm going to be a good steward of the library's money. So I've been through all the ups and downs with all of you. I know all the ins and outs of what happened. I'm the one who watched all the city council meetings. I know everything that you've said in the past two, three years. So I'm not opposed to anything you've said, and I'm not, you know, going to be argumentative about anything, so I'm not going to quibble over money. But Alderman Freeman, I do want to apologize to you. You did call the library, apparently you said in your statement that you called them Monday. Unfortunately, I have a lot of new people, and the person you spoke to has only been there three weeks. I'm not sure it was you. We don't have that many people calling and asking about the old doors, but she did not give the call to me after like her fourth, I don't know, she should have transferred it. So in the future, if you all want to just call me directly, I'll pass out some of my library cards. And just give me a call. Email's good, too. So I'm more than happy to tell you anything you want to know about the library. And actually, I'll probably talk your ear off. And there's plenty of people in this room that would tell you that they can't get away from me once I start talking. So I just want to give you guys a little background of why we applied for that Historic Preservation Grant. And I will be talking a little bit later about what's going on at the library, but this is just kind of to clear that up from Monday. The Historic Preservation Grant, you were right, Alderman Freeman, that those library doors haven't been used in years and years and years, which is a shame. The previous administrator wanted to install some brand new, like $20,000 sliding doors with a massive cement and steel ramp going down the front of the building, which would just make it really horrendous looking. My dream for the past four years has been to restore those doors. It's my childhood library, and when I was a child, just walking through those doors was just a tremendous sense of awe, a sense of this is just a temple of knowledge. And so they're beautiful, but somebody slapped layers and layers of paint on them over the years. So we do need to kind of bring them back to their former glory. As you know, you all are financial budgeters. You know exactly what you're doing with the budget comes around. When you have a budget that you're working with and you want a special project, you can't just pull money from line items and divert it to a special project. You have to budget for that or look for money and alternate funding. So that's what I did. The Historic Preservation Grant information was mailed to us. And we got it, I got it in the mail, looked it over, called Gina and said, is the library qualified to be in on this grant? And she assured me that we were, it was perfectly fine. So I went ahead with the proposal and wrote up the grant, got a quote from a local guy, just one quote, because there's really only one person in town that can do that kind of restoration, as I'm sure you all know. And there's a little bit more to that restoration than just refinishing the doors. It's going to be a long process. I met with the fire department. It's just going to be a huge process, too. We have to take the doors off one at a time instead of both at once. There are security measures that had to be added for the doors while they're off the library. And the mechanisms and the locking mechanisms will need some replacement. And I did get ahold of the original locksmith of the library. I'm sure probably some of you know Bill Robertson, and he's willing, he's retired, but he's willing to take on that job when the time comes. And I don't actually have an idea how much he's going to charge because he didn't even know himself. So so that's part of that. So that's probably not going to happen until next year, or I'm not even sure. I mean, we'll try to get it done when the doors are refinished. And then the original brass plates are missing off the doors and the handles. They're beautiful. They were specifically designed to the Carnegie specifications, and they're gone. So we have a couple of antique dealers trying to find those doors. So the quote that I submitted was just for the refinishing, and that's why. There's just a lot of unknowns in that whole entire process. And also, according to the fire department, I talked with Travis, and he said, if we do want to use them eventually, we'll have to put in a push bar. So that's kind of a little bit on hold. The main thing I wanted to do was get them refinished in time for the fall because the Funderburck House will be opening for tours in the fall. And the library has a very close connection with the Funderburck House. Catherine Reinhardt built that house and was very instrumental in building the library. So I kind of wanted the front of the library to match the Funderburck House. We're going to get a lot of people and tourists in here for that. So that's why I submitted it so soon. It could have waited until next year, and I am working on amending the budget, but you know, it's just trying to get it done quickly so that we could get it ready, at least looking nice from the outside. So those are the reasons why I applied for the Historic Preservation Grant. I don't want anyone to think that we were, we're trying to take money away from businesses or residents of Belvidere. I actually have 17 employees now, and 15 of them live in Belvidere. So I mean, we're all residents, we all pay property tax. So just wanted to give you all a little bit of background information on that. I mean, I have, I have applied for the National Registry of Historic Places. They actually contacted me. There's only about 70 Carnegie area libraries in the United States who are not on the National Registry, and they're on a big mission to get us all on there. So I already submitted the paperwork. I should hear in two weeks. The next step is a site visit. And I did mention in there how wonderful the Historic Preservation Commission is and the city in preserving the history of this town. So that's written in my grant. I probably could amend it, but I mean, I'm a competent writer, but I don't think I'm that good. So anyway, that's just so you know, that's a little background on those doors. And if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. I'll talk in a little while after Pam from Growth Dimensions and let you know what's going on at the library. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on your new job. Okay, going down the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of July 6, 2021, as presented. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Mohal, second by Alderman Snow. Any corrections, any comments? Discussion, any complaints? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Item five, we have no public hearing this evening. And item six, under Special Messages and Proclamations, we have Pam Lopez-Fettis, our Executive Director for Growth Dimensions, with us here this evening. Pam, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. We've had a little bit more activity this month, almost double the activity we've had in the past for our enterprise zone activity. Even though it's still within nine businesses, we've had 32 projects and 1.7 million, over 1.7 million in construction material costs that were incorporated, as well as 3.5 million in capital investment for our enterprise zone activity, which is pretty substantial compared to last year especially. We have been working a lot with the state in order to help improve our marketability to companies, not only to attract them to our area, but also to sustain them in our area. Part of that message that we've been giving to the state was regard to incentives and trying to make it economically feasible for some companies. I was glad to hear that last week after talking to the state, they are looking at a couple different programs that will be, that they're going to propose moving forward. We also have a number of elected officials in Northern Illinois that have been very supportive toward our efforts. The goal is to keep businesses like Stellantis and the jobs here in Northern Illinois. So I'd like to say that, you know, we're moving in the right direction in that, in that fact. And the state's been listening and been supporting. And again, a lot of support from the elected officials here. We have also been working a lot with our small business development. We have the Venture Program, which is our way to develop that business ecosystem in our community. And we're almost done with our draft report for the Source Finder, which is our asset mapping. We all have a press conference on August 5th to showcase Public Release Compass. It's going to be navigating entrepreneurs and innovators. It's going to be an asset map of resources available for businesses. It'll be in form, we're actually working on trying to secure some funding to develop this being a tool that somebody will be able to search based on their zip code and based on their needs. But right now, it'll be a form that we'll maintain as we move forward. And this report identifies where some of the gaps are in our region and what our future needs could possibly, what we can do to possibly address those needs. So we have received some funding from the Kaufman Foundation in order to, and the National Lees cities to, to help us support this. And we are looking at some additional funding moving forward to, again, continuing to help our small business development. The funding that we're looking at will address maybe some minority-owned businesses or populations that veterans or women-owned businesses that both federal and state programs are looking at. In addition, we're working with our Region One Planning Council to apply for a grant with the Small Business Association. And this will to allow, again, those minority populations and underserved populations, which could be existing businesses or new businesses that are being developed. So we're going to continue to, again, try to help our small business development because we know that sometimes those large projects are on occasion, but also it's, it's growing within. Some of these projects, we've actually been working with four or five projects in this past month. Project Runway, Ecosphere, and Recycle are three of those. They include a fruit processing plant, a producer of batteries, and a battery recycling plant. We've also been working with our local municipalities on Project OM, which includes a fuel center, and Project Kelly, which would entail a large distribution center. This large distribution center, it would be about 1.3 million in square feet, expandable to 1.7 million square feet, about 175 acres located in Boone County. It's with, the tenant would be a US-based Fortune 500 company, bring about 120 jobs and over 100 million in investment. So we'll keep you informed about what, you know, we've been able to share with you little by little, but we'll continue to keep you up to date about how that's going. But it's been, we've been very active, and I think the team here in Belvidere have been really instrumental in spending a lot of time and helping us secure this, this tenant. We also have our annual dinner event, which will be in person this year, and that's going to be on September 2nd. The speaker will be James Ellis. He's the author of the book called Talent Chooses You. We thought that that might be nice because a lot of people are having some challenges with their workforce. We're seeing this across the board, so we thought he might have some innovative ideas and be able to spark some, you know, new talent, refreshing time talent ideas for these, for individuals. We've also are involved with the, and sponsoring the Foreign Trade Zone 176 Annual Meeting on October 6th. The keynote speaker there is going to be Henry, Harry Moser. He's the founder of Reshoring Initiative and other books as well. He's nationally recognized for bringing manufacturing back to the US. And he has a, what they call a total cost ownership estimator. It helps businesses identify, based on the, some of the data that, again, how much it would cost to bring them back in business, back into the US versus outside the country. And it's pretty neat, but a lot of the, our states are using it in order to attract businesses. I think that's kind of a summary of what we've been working on. If there are any questions for me?
I will say, Pam, that business attraction here, not only in the state of Illinois, but throughout the country, is very, very competitive. And we know it takes a lot of hard work, and it does. It takes a lot of investment of time and resources. And I know you have done a tremendous job with some of these projects that we have, and I'm, I'm optimistic that they're going to pay dividends. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So Pam, I don't know if you can answer this. I read somewhere, AKA Facebook, that the grandma's restaurant, Beefaroo deal is dead. Is that true or not?
And you need to kind of confirm this with me, it's not dead. What they're looking for is a franchise owner. So yeah, they are looking to, I believe, remove the building, rebuild, basically, once that's following. So it's okay to refer to Gina has been working very closely with them.
The last time I spoke to the Beefaroo, and because obviously there's two parties, the owners, the buyers. Last time I talked to the buyers, they were waiting for the franchise. I did get a communication today from the sellers wanting to know why the city denied them a drive-through lane. And I said, there, there was no application, and if they did apply, it wouldn't have been denied. You know, we've never denied a drive-through lane. So there's obviously some kind of discommunication. Facebook is probably part of it. So we are trying to figure out the, the details. But yes, the last time I talked to the buyers, they were waiting for the franchise.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? All right. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. All right, Mindy?
My encore appearance.
Here it is.
No applause is necessary. Okay, so first of all, I want to tell you, I'm going to be here every month, the third Monday, or yeah, third Monday, right, Sarah?
Yep.
Of the month. I'll be here to kind of give you a little update of what's going on in the library. I feel that you haven't been getting that kind of information in the past, so I'll be here to help answer any questions, to let you know what we're doing, what's happening at the library. We're, we're not all that secretive. We're just a library, so we're just trying to get people to read. To let you know what I've been doing since I started May 27th, I couldn't be here in June, I'm very sorry about that. I was working on the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. I was working on the audit. I had five staff members to replace, so it was a little bit crazy. But we're at full staff right now. We have 17 employees. Two are leaving for college, unfortunately, but I already have their replacements lined up. I actually have more employees' applications lined up than I can hire right now. So I, most of them are all, like I said, Belvidere residents. There's only two of my staff that do not live in Belvidere, and one lives in Boone County, since she's going off to college. So we're all Belvidere residents, taxpayers, so that, hopefully that helps you get a little better picture of what's happening at the library. When you come in to visit, you're probably going to see your neighbors or your neighbor's daughters. I have a lot of teenagers, a lot of first timers, it's their first job, that are going to be starting, and I'm very excited about that. I love to give young people a start in the library world, so it's going to be kind of fun. Cards for Kids, I want to talk about Cards for Kids. We've always had this issue with the not, the non-resident cards. As you all know, we're funded by Belvidere City taxpayer dollars, and the Illinois State Library Regulations state that we're for the benefit of the Belvidere residents and taxpayers. That's what the money's for. Non-residents, we can option to provide them cards, and then it's based upon an equitable and fair rate comparable to what a Belvidere taxpayer would pay. So that's why we have the rates that we do for non-residents. However, whatever you may think of him, Governor Pritzker started a wonderful program last year called Cards for Kids. Any child who has a, qualifies for a free lunch program would get, gets a free library card, and their family could get a prorated card also, whether or not they live in the city, could be in the county, too. We did not start, it was passed last year, we did not start with it because the library board voted to generously give every child in the county a free card because they were all learning distantly. There's no, at school, they couldn't get their library. So we've been giving out free cards to county residents. We gave away about 185. Those cards will expire August 31st, and we're still trying to decide if we're going to expand it again or work with the Cards for Kids Act. So that's kind of what's going on with that. Oh, as far as employees go, I wanted to let you know that we have four employees now with masters or library science degrees, including myself, and we have three who are bilingual, so that's a big help to the community. We have applied for a lot of grants. We did get a grant to expand our Wi-Fi service. The Wi-Fi service now reaches out to the parking lot, the front sidewalk, the back garden area, so anyone can come in, sit at the table, sit in their car in the lot, and get Wi-Fi service with no password. So that's kind of a big, that was a big help. One of the things, of course, of being a library director in an old building is you never know what's going to happen. So my very first week, the galvanized steel pipes in the sprinkler system rusted through, and were leaking air, so those had to be replaced. That's a pretty big expense. So they're, they're done now, but it was a shocker when I walked in and heard all the We did have that eyesore fence removed at 111 West Hurlburt. That's a property that the library owns, and I'll tell you a little bit about the library property, but that fence was falling down, and it was really a hazard, probably a fire hazard, too, I'm sure. That's down now. The property the library owns, I'm sure all of you know the library owns other properties, so I'll just give you a little quick explanation. We own an empty lot on the corner of Kishawaki and Hurlburt. We don't pay property tax on that, it's not exempt. We use it for programs. The hope is to have that for expansion. We do own the home on 111 West Hurlburt. We leased that out, and we do pay property tax on that, about $3,700 a year. The library pays property tax on that property. We also own, own the church next door, and that's leased out to the Baptist Church. Every year, they renew that lease, so that's leased out to them, but it's in, we don't pay taxes because it's not for profit. Both entities are nonprofits. So hopefully that explains the property we own. Let's see, we are, we went back to full capacity just in the last month. So we've got all the tables and chairs open, but we are not holding in-person programming yet. It's still outside programming only. We're still requiring masks in the library because we have a lot of children. We're kind of qualified, the same as a school, educational institution. I just had a meeting last week with our legal people at the library system, with OSHA, with EEOC, and they're advising us to continue those socially distanced measures for the fall due to the Delta variant. So we're going to keep doing that. So we're just trying to protect the children in the community that come to our library. We don't want anybody to get sick coming to the library. Let's see, programs, oh, I did file the Illinois Public Annual Library Report. I did have the library added to, there's a fund by the Illinois State Library that allows libraries who are not considered 501(c)(3) that are tax levy supported to apply to, to have a little general fund. Most libraries, because we're tax levy, we cannot fundraise. We're required by law, we can't go out and raise funds. We can accept donations. We can't go out and do, you know, selling T-shirts, selling mugs, whatever. We can accept donations for those items, but we can't do fundraisers. So most libraries get around that by having their friends in the library qualify as a 501(c)(3), and they can accept donations from any business who needs a 501(c)(3) receipt or paperwork. Our Fund was formed many, many years ago, and it was just formed as a social organization, so they do not have 501(c)(3) status. They cannot do the fundraising that we'd like them to do. They basically just hold a book sale a couple times a year, and they haven't been able to hold that all year because of COVID. So the Illinois Public Library gets around that, and in 1990, they formed a special fund called the Illinois State Library Fund. And any library, any public library who does not have 501(c)(3) status can join this fund for a very nominal fee a year. And it's sort of like a clearinghouse. For anyone who wants to donate to the library and needs 501(c)(3) paperwork, they make the check out to the Illinois State Library Fund, library, and with us, our name in the notes, library fund processes it, sends them all the paperwork, and then sends the funds to us. It's a very small fee, it can range anywhere from like $50 to $100 a year. So I had the library added to that, so hopefully we can start looking at some other opportunities for funding or fundraising, I want to say, so we can look at more businesses. So that's kind of a great addition. I also had at the library, we added to a program called Explore More Illinois, where you can use your library card, access the program, and you can get discounts on cultural and entertainment attractions throughout Illinois. Right now, I think on there is the Children's Museum, where you can get four tickets for the price of one, for the Children's Museum in Chicago. I know Jen Jackett, the Y, was thinking of adding on a discount to the Y membership, so I'm still, they're still working on it. It was on hold through COVID, and now they're adding more and more attractions to it all the time. So it's just added value. If you want to have a library card, it's added value to you. Let's see, what else is there? We're, I'm adding an e-reads database. It's called Through the Illinois State Library. It's a very small fee, I think it's like 880 a year, and we get access to thousands more audiobooks, downloadable audiobooks. So we're adding the library to that. I am working on an amended budget. It's not finished yet. As you all know, amended budgets have to be approved by the library board. So we will have our next meeting July 27th. You're all welcome to be there. It's a Zoom meeting. Just the information will be on our website. So if you want to hear a little bit about it, and I'll talk with you next month about the amended budget. So we're kind of adding, my bookkeeping and I are adding a lot of line items that we're missing, things that didn't make sense, so we're changing things around a little bit to make, make it more clear, so. my bookkeeper and I are adding a lot of line items that we're missing, things that didn't make sense, so we're changing things around a little bit to make, make it more clear, so. Um, I guess that's about all I have on updates on that. Um, just to tell you a little bit about myself, because I didn't really introduce myself. Um, I lived in this community since two thousand and four. I live in Ward Five, Marcia Freeman, Alderman-Freeman's, and Alderman-Barrington's Ward. I've been there for a long, long time. Um, I graduated from Belvidere High, some of you I went to high school with, I'm not going to look at anybody. Um, and some of you, um, are my neighbors, I'm not going to look at anybody again. So, I've been here for a long time. Um, and I absolutely love the library, I love our community. I've been writing articles, historic articles about the community and the women who live here for quite a long time now. And, uh, now I'm writing about some of the more unusual events that have happened here. I've kind of been on hold for a couple of months because I'm learning my new job, but there should be an article next week that you'll see coming out in the paper. But, I just love this community, I think it's great. I moved away for a short time to, and then I came right back to raise my kids, so. It's a great place to raise your children. Um, I do, I do have a master's of business admini, well, first of all, I have a bachelor's of science in economics with a minor in accounting from Rockford College, I have a master's of business administration degree from Rockford College, and I have a master of library and information science from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. So, my kids tease me that I have way too many degrees and not enough common sense, so, there you go. So, that's all about me. Do you have any questions about me or the library or anything like that? I just, like I said, I just want us to have a more transparent, friendly relationship going forward. Anything you guys want to know about, you can call me up, email me, stop in, uh, I'll brew a pot of coffee, I love coffee, and I'll probably talk your ear off, so. Any questions from anybody? Yes.
Alderman-Freeman.
Thanks, I have like probably multiple ones for you actually tonight. Um, you know, I, I'm not an advocate for giving the library because it's, it's, it has its own tax levy, um, money that I feel should go to the small businesses in the downtown area, um, who are actually hurting more because of COVID too. Um, but, you guys, I feel like have, um, a bigger pot of money that's available to you. Like, I think I counted in a lesson, like seventeen grants that you guys are eligible to apply for through the state. Um, one being the per capita equalization.
We have that, sure.
Um, it's like a buck twenty-five a person.
It's actually more.
Is it more now?
Do you want me to answer that real quick?
Sure.
Actually, the per capita grant is a grant from the State of Illinois to help fund library services. It is a restricted grant, you can't just use it for whatever you want. It's supposed to go only to services to benefit the library patrons. We must keep track of that in a separate line item account, which has not, which is one of the things I'm adding to the line items. So, they actually increased it this year to a dollar forty-five instead of a dollar twenty-five. The Governor Pritzker just said that through. We haven't received the money yet, but we got the letter, so no one knows when exactly he's going to sign the checks and when we're going to get the money. So, that's kind of, State of Illinois is a little bit delayed, so, you know how that goes. Um, but we, we are restricted to how we can spend that. So, a lot of the grants, I did apply for a forty thousand dollar COVID relief grant, very competitive grant, we did not get it. So, um, these are very competitive grants, especially in these times, so. We're doing everything we can. I have my teen services coordinator right now is applying for a NASA grant, to have some NASA program, money for some programming through NASA. Don't know if she'll get it, but she's working her heart out trying to get it, trying to write it and get it ready. Um, we're working on all sorts of grants that we, anything we can find that will qualify, we are working on it. We did receive a back-to-books grant. Um, I think it was like maybe thirty-five hundred, maybe it could have been six thousand, I don't have the exact number right now, but that was last year, and that was restricted to books only for children, youth, and teens. So, these grants sometimes are very restrictive, and you can't just spend them on whatever you want, so, um, they are a big help though, I have to agree on that. We did also just receive a very small money from the Belvidere Women's Club in memory of their, um, members who have passed away. And their requirement is that we purchase seven sort of learning books about women, um, to commemorate the seven women who have passed away, so. They, we call those restricted donations, restricted grants, so, um, we do, there's a lot of caveats to go with some of those grants. But, we are trying, we're trying our best to apply for it, and, and I understand what you're saying, but I also want to say that that historic preservation, the guidelines for that are requested from Gina. There, um, you guys, I'm sure if you haven't read them, I'm sure you can request them from her. There is nothing in those guidelines that states that a tax levy organization cannot apply for those funds. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, "Give it to us" or "Don't give it to us," but I'm saying that, I think that what you're doing, if you're saying that you're objecting because it's a tax levy-supported organization, you're setting a precedence for other organizations in the future to not be, have access to those funds also. So, I mean, that's fine if you want to just have it for businesses, but I feel like you need to consult with Attorney Drella and revise your guidelines, and maybe even your minutes book of fifty-eight, I'm not sure, but. I mean, I'm, if you don't want to give it to us, that's, it's, I'm not going to quibble with you all, over a thousand dollars, it's not, it's not worth it. But, um, as, as resident of your district, I think you probably should take a little bit of caution when you're setting precedence, that's all. But, we are applying for as many grants as we possibly can.
Continue, Alderman-Freeman.
Okay, thanks. And, and like, that's my point, is that you, you do qualify and do you have the opportunity to apply for way more grants than, because you're a library and because you're also a historic building, than, um, the businesses downtown that are hurting that, you know, need it for awnings or paint or windows or, um, whatnot. Um, also, so, you talked about, um, Governor Pritzker's, um, Cards for Kids, and whether you're going to continue that or not. Um, there's kids that live in the county, and I know you base it off of how much a city person pays for, on their taxes. Um, but a lot of the county kids, you know, not everybody in the county lives in Aberdeen, and a lot of them rent in, you know, the older subdivisions, and, um, even eighty dollars is a lot for mom and dad to have to cough up. Have you guys ever considered just any student in the Belvidere District One Hundred, um, having access to a free library card as long as they're a District One Hundred student? And is, how much of a financial burden would that actually be on you guys?
Well, first of all, the non-resident cards, we are restricted by the State of Illinois, how, how, the formulas we can use. There are only two formulas available to us, and that's the tax rate and the per capita rate. Those are the two we have to have, we have to follow those for non-residents. Um, we did, like I said, we gave all year, we gave any child in the county or the county district, and no matter where they lived, a free library card. So, that's still going on, those cards are still going to August 31st, and we're taking a look at how we want to proceed with the Cards for Kids. The Cards for Kids is for any child, District One Hundred, Two Hundred, in our county, that qualifies for free lunch program. There's a lot of sort of tricky aspects to that, and that's, we do not want to invade the privacy of families. Um, how are we going to, how are we going to process their library cards? Is it going to be something that's processed along with their application for free and reduced student lunch? We don't want children and their families coming into the library and having to say, in front of everyone, "Hey, I qualify for free lunch, here's my," you know, children, children can find this information out from each other, and, you know, to be quite frank, children are not always the nicest to each other about things like that. So, we don't, we want to protect the privacy of our children and of our parents and our families. So, we're still trying to figure out how to do that. Some libraries, Cherry Valley Library, I believe, is talking about processing at the same time as a free and reduced lunch program. It's an intergovernmental agreement process that they're, they're going through, so we're kind of keeping our eye on what they're doing, and then we'll see what's going to happen there. But, we'd love to give, we'd love to give library cards to everybody in the county, we just, we just can't do it. Um, we'd love to go through a process of getting, uh, the county added into our district. It's a very long process. It's very lengthy, and it's very, uh, legal-heavy, and it's a lot of, you have to get a hundred people to sign a petition, has to go to the next general election. All the majority of voters in every county, Liam Capron, in Poplar Grove, and, um, all the surrounding communities have to agree, so we have to, all those separate elections, they all have to majority vote it. Then it has to go before a judge, and then the judge has to reset the district lines. We'd love to be a district library. I'd love to have a branch in Poplar Grove by that, by that post office, love to have a library branch over there, but it's, it's just a long process. And I hopefully, and soon I'll be able to meet with the county board and talk with them a little bit about it, but. I mean, if there's county people that want to support that and help us work towards it, that's great. I, I want services for everyone. I'd love to see a bookmobile go out that way, so, you know, but we can't do it until we have the voter's permission. And there's a lot of voters who aren't going to agree to that, so. I mean, we're doing what we can for the low-income children right now, and we will continue to do what we can for the low-income children, so. And all of our programs, by the way, any program is free, they don't need a library card to be in a program, so. We have a lot of pro, fun programs, so. They can come and be in any program they want. So, I hope that helps answer some of your questions. If you want to come anytime and sit down with me and we'll talk it over, that's great. We can sit in the office and have some coffee. If you drink coffee, and we'll talk about maybe some kind of plans we can put forth and see what we can do. And I also have a, I have an email into the Illinois State Library, wonderful people, they've helped me so greatly with, um, trans, transitioning. And, um, I asked them if they would be willing to have someone come and talk to the city council, maybe next month, maybe the month after, about these processes, so. They're very open to that, so hopefully we'll get somebody that can give you a little more information. I'm not an expert, but, you know, they are, so. So, I hope that helps.
It does.
Question?
So, I think this would be for, um, Attorney Drella. So, what other, um, taxing bodies would be exempt from this, um, particular downtown facade grant, other than the library and the Park District or the School District?
I'm not sure if you mean by exempt.
I, I mean, unqualified.
So, there's nothing in our city code about the grant program at all that I'm aware of. I can't find anything in Chapter Fifty-Eight. Is that through your bylaws?
No, I, I think there is some, there's two different grants. There's a historic preservation grant, and then there's a downtown facade grant. Um, and historic structures, landmark structures, those are all regulated through Chapter Fifty-Eight. So, I think that's where that reference tax only came from, is that historic structures, which will be the library if the, the state approves their grant, that would fall under Chapter Fifty-Eight, and that is for, um, what exterior renovations. So, for instance, if, once you're landmarked and you have historic doors, and you say, "I want to take those out and put in steel security doors," that would require per Chapter Fifty-Eight, a certificate of appropriateness, which needs to be reviewed and approved by the commission, it would most likely be, be denied because that's not appropriate, um, stuff like that. So, it's not necessarily the grant, it would be some of the additional requirements for appropriateness that, uh, would need to be looked at, which is why for the downtown facade grant, staff makes a recommendation, and then Historic Preservation Commission, if you notice, they make a recommendation as well, because some of these are landmark structures. So, they review all the downtown grants, so that way they can give their two cents as to whether or not they think it's appropriate, um, from the certificate of appropriateness side. So, I, I think that's where some of the confusion came from.
For the facade grant program, I'd have to research it, I don't know offhand.
Right, well, what I'm asking is, so if the, you know, if the Park District or the School District bought a building downtown to have for whatever purpose, um, then they would be eligible for the downtown facade improvement grant when, you know, they are each their own taxing bodies as well.
I'd have to research that later, no, I don't know offhand.
I do, I, you know what, I had a, I have a copy over there of the guidelines from Gina, but, um, I'm sure she'll give you the guidelines of the grant. But, it, it, there's some statement in there that if there is not enough money to go around, there are certain, the decision's based upon location, historic significance, things like that. Um, I was thinking, when I was looking at this, if we're going to exclude a tax levy organization, we're also excluding things like the fire department, historic fire department, we're excluding the museum, possibly the Funderburgh House, since it's now owned by the museum. So, those are all tax, taxing bodies, so that's what I was thinking of. Um, even the museum itself, if they needed a facade grant somewhere down the line, so that's what I'm thinking of. I'm not, if you don't want to give it to us, that's where I'm not going to quibble over, but I'm just thinking, going down the line in the future, you know, how that's going to go for anyone else trying to apply for the grant, so.
Gina?
Off topic of the grant, but, um, are you, did you want to maybe mention the Rock Valley Bus partnership?
We do, we do have, the Tech Bus will be here, yes, which is the twenty-second, which is Thursday. The Tech Bus has already been here once, done blocklay clothing for, um, the student, younger students, and they'll be here on Thursday for a seventh through twelve, um, teaching them how to code Ozobots. Be parked out front again, so Chief Woody, it'll be out front of the library again on Thursday. I think it's one-thirty to five, and the kids get a free Ozobot to bring home with them, so. It's absolutely wonderful, and, um, Chuck, who runs the program, said he'll probably have a few extra Ozobots, and he's going to give them to the library, so that's really nice, at the end of the summer, so. That's very nice. So, that's a good program. Um, also, August third, we're going to be a mobile vaccination site. Um, so, we will have, um, the mobile vaccination van in the library parking lot doing mobile vaccinations, so that's kind of a good thing too, so. Wednesday, we have the therapy dogs at the library. If you're feeling stressed and you want to come and get a little bit of relaxation, we have coloring and therapy dogs in the back of the library on the bigger tables, so. Adults can color too, so. And I do also want, one more thing I wanted to mention, I forgot, is, um, some of you have library cards, some of you don't have library cards. I'm not going to say anything about who does and doesn't. Um, some people have library cards that may be expired, some people have library cards, some people in this room, they have library cards that are maybe expired and maybe have fines on them. I've been awarding a one-time courtesy waiver of fines and fees, so if you have a library card and you have fines on it and you want to renew your library card, you can shoot me a discreet email, it will waive your fines and fees, and it will renew your library card. So, you can come back to the library, and you can get some books and check it out, walk around, enjoy the library, and see how wonderful it is, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, last thing that I have to say, I, um, I enjoyed you, I think you're really a breath of fresh air.
Thank you.
Um, and, and long overdue for the library to, um.
Thank you.
But, um, I, I just can't, um, you have your own tax levy, and like the rest of us that live on a tax levy, we kind of have to stay within our budget, and.
That's true.
I hope that you apply for every one of these grants, and I, I hope that.
And if you have a listing of grants that you have there that you think we could apply for, just shoot me an email, and we'll try our best to get applied for them, so we'll see what happens. But, I also do want to point to all, I'll point out to all of you that we do have the fifteen, fifteen members of our staff who are paying tax, our property taxpayers, so. I don't want my property tax to go up more than anybody else. The last time property tax went up, I have a very illogical mortgage company who wants to raise my escrow, double what my taxes go up. So, I feel for everybody who has their property tax go up, because I've been going steadily up with the mortgage company, and it's frustrating, so. So, I mean, I'm going to do my best to be a good steward for the, for the library money, so. I understand, I understand your point of view, if you don't want to award that, that's fine, we can put the project out till next year. I was just trying to rush it through in time for the Funderburgh House to, uh, open up, and the library to make a good impression.
Any other questions for Mindy? All right?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming, that's, uh.
I hope to see you in the library pretty soon.
As much information as we've received in my lifetime, so.
Yes, if you have your card.
Thank you.
Have your card, it's not hard, why you have a library card.
All right, moving on, uh, we'll move to, um, number seven, approval of expenditures. Uh, we'll have a general and special fund expenditures in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow. Second by Alderman Fleury. Any questions, comments, discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have probably several here. Um, first off, I want to point out, um, I had a huge question about the Heritage Days barbecue, um, because it's like massive amount of money on, um, this bill's payable this month, but I reached out to Deanie, and he assured me that all of the barbecue money is donations and entry fees, and, um, it usually comes out actually in the black, and, um, none of that, none of this money comes out of the city coffers. So, I was happy to hear that. Um, my first one was on, um, pay, it's, it's for, um, Chief Woody, page twelve. Um, the FMK nine stuff, um, are we already in that program? We've already sent the officer to be, start training?
Yeah, Officer Zaff is, uh, there, he's in his second week, I believe, and, uh, been training there overnight for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, again for you on page fourteen, um, we had some vehicle towed. Usually those have a squad number by them, and when they don't, it's usually like something like a stolen car or something?
Yeah, uh, these were, one was from the fatal pedestrian accident that we had, and the other one was a hit-and-run accident that, uh, started at Walmart, and when we located the suspect vehicle, we had it towed, uh, for investigative purposes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I have, um, for Chief Heiser. And then I have for Chief Heiser on page 17. It's the Air One Equipment, the Class A Plus Foam. Is that what we used for the chem tool, chemical fire?
No, it's not. Class A foam is something that we had to have in stock for our fire department. We didn't use any extinguishing agent at the chem tool.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I was just wondering if that was to replenish something that we had used?
No, furthermore, just a little bit more knowledge for you. Class A foam, this in a sense makes water wetter. So after a structured fire, we'll take that and we'll introduce it to the house and then that clings to the wood structure and makes sure the fire is out.
Oh, okay. So that's not chemical foam stuff, oh.
No, no.
And then I think, oh, Kip's not here, so I guess, I don't, on page 23, we paid for electrical inspections. Is that maybe Sarah, do you know if that? Like I thought we budgeted and hired part-time electrical and plumbing inspectors. Is that out of that budget? Is that who they are?
That's who they are.
Okay. Thank you. And then I think I have one more, maybe two more. For, one for Brent on page 29. The William Charles Electric Belvedere slash Logan work for 798. Is that part of the stuff that we're doing on Logan Avenue?
Not yet. That's for repairs for the existing signals.
Existing what? I'm sorry?
Existing signals.
Oh, the signal, okay. And I guess I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Freeman.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I had one more for Chief Woody. It is about the Kaplan Rosen Hotel Center. So that's $821. I'm hoping that that's for more than one night?
Yeah, that'd be for a whole week. He attends both the Illinois and National SRO Conference every year.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I didn't think we were spending $800 a night, but I wanted to make sure.
No.
All right, is that all? Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any questions? Alderwoman Frank, go ahead.
I think this is for Brent on page 40, for the Boone County Highway. Is that our part, our share for the Newburgh Shaw intersection?
No, that's for our share of the Lawrenceville Papa Grove Road intersection.
Oh, okay.
Where we had to pay 25%.
A while back.
Yeah, this is the, bill's catching up with the work being done.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, then we have a motion on, and a second on the floor for approval of expenditures for general and special fund in the amount of $1,188,592.68. All those in favor, when their name is read, will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed. And then, under approval of expenditures, seven underwater and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $362,958.90. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, do we have a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion, any questions, any comments, any concerns? Okay, hearing none. All those that are in favor will signify by saying aye. When their name is called and those opposed will say nay, as a clerk calls a roll.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. Items A through E are recorded and placed on file. You will notice item E, monthly general fund report. Our budget and finance director, Shannon Hanson, do you have any comment on that? Or would you like to comment on that?
Just a couple of comments. There was unfortunately a typo. Actually, I dropped a zero off on one light item and that has been fixed going forward. And another line item, you know, I'm sure you know, they can fluctuate throughout the year. So we have one item that is over budget right now, but we have grant funds that will come in at a later date that will actually replenish some of that, because with the grants, obviously you have to pay everything out and until you do, you don't get those funds back. So that will change over the course of the year.
And these were behind because, obviously you had to catch these up, because as the council knows, we were without a budget finance director for, I don't know how many weeks, I don't know, 11, 12, I don't know. How many? Many, okay, thank you. And so anyhow, so as you can see, those are coming forward here. And thank you, Ms. Hanson, I appreciate it. Any questions regarding that? Okay, item F, minutes of the committee of the whole, building, planning, zoning and public works of July 12, 2021. Do we have a motion for their approval? Motion by Alderman Snow, you have a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Any questions regarding or corrections regarding the minutes of the committee of the whole of July 12? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Moving to number nine, unfinished business, we have 9A, ordinance 544H is a second reading, an ordinance amending section 10-79 of the liquor liability insurance. And as we had discussed, there was some, we had a $2 million per occurrence charge on that or actually make sure that we had insurability for that amount. The city attorney had thought that, had informed us that actually the state had required much less and many of our business owners weren't even aware that they were supposed to have $2 million. So that's what this is about, a reduction. Any questions? Do we have a motion for 544H first? Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather, any discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thanks. I just had a question for attorney. So if the, there's a cap on how much you can get if you're injured by somebody that has had too much to drink and you're trying to sue that establishment. So it's less than a million dollars. So the million dollars is for if there's multiple people injured in the same incident?
You would cover that, yes. Or are multiple incidents unrelated? Any other comments, any concerns, any questions? Alderman, Alderman Snow?
I assume at this point, though, just because we're requiring them to have this insurance, we would never be privy to the fact that whether anybody ever made a claim or what the outcome. Is that a fair assessment? I don't know if that comes before the, you being the liquor commission, if any of those things have to come before you or have you in the loop, just curious.
Specific claims, no. We would not necessarily be aware of them or know what the settlement was or a trial verdict type as it was. Reality, incidents that like, that give rise to a claim, a lot of times we'll find out about because there might have been a result relating DUI or a call to the bar as far as an EMS call, something like that. So a lot of times we'll know, incident occurred. But you're right, we wouldn't know about any settlement or what it was for, if the claim was even filed. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thanks. So I think we had it at 2 million and a lot of them didn't have 2 million, didn't even know they needed 2 million. So moving forward that we're doing it at 1 million, is there a way that we can make sure they do, like they have to renew their liquor license every year? They have to do proof of insurance at that time?
We already do that, that's how I caught the ones that didn't. I think, I think all the ones are current, correct? Correct. All, yes, with, with a million, yes. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Then we have an ordinance, second reading, number 544H, an ordinance amending section 10-79 of the liquor liability insurance. We'll have a roll call vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye, any opposed, nay?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Thank you, motion passed. We have item 10, new business, resolution number 2021-12, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. And this is, of course, for the Logan Avenue improvement. Do we have a motion to, for, to pass resolution 2021-12? Alderwoman Prather, second? Alderwoman Freeman, thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding this motion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote as well. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, any opposed, nay?
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. We have 10, item B, resolution number 2021-13, resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Cherry Valley and the City of Belvidere for the overlay of the intersection of Newburgh Road and Shaw Road. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman McGee, second. Second by Alderwoman Prather. Brent, did you have any comments regarding this?
No, other than the fact that Cherry Valley has already approved it and sent us their signed version of it, so.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments or any concerns? Alderwoman Freeman?
I'd just like to reiterate for the people at home that probably think this is county, that this is actually annexed into the city, so it's our responsibility.
Thank you. Anything else before we vote? Alderwoman Frank?
Brent, will this start this fall?
Yes, we open our bids up tomorrow, as a matter of fact, for the overlays and those bids will be coming back to you next Monday night for, at committee for action. And once they get approved through council and get the contract signed, then the work will be done. And this is included on the list.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, and we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve resolution number 2021-13, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Cherry Valley and the City of Belvidere for the overlay of the intersection of Newburgh Road and Shaw Road. We'll have a roll call vote on this and all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, we have the motions forwarded from the committee of the whole, building, planning and zoning and, building, planning and zoning and public works of July 12, 2021. Motions out of Public Works Committee, Chairwoman Freeman.
Thank you. A, motion to approve the proposal from Packard Excavating in the amount of $304,750 for the demolition of the wood frame portion of the Leith Building. This work will be paid for from capital line item number 41-5-110-7900.
Okay, we have a motion to that effect. Do we have any discussion? Alderman Snow?
So this would be for Brent, I would assume. So when they go to take this down, will this be by heavy equipment or are they going to do an implosion, a little mix of both or anything like that?
Heavy equipment.
They're going to wait for a strong wind?
Or the first snowfall.
Or first snowfall, yes. Alderwoman Mahal?
Thank you. Will the asbestos be taken care of at that time?
Yes.
I'm going to assume.
They have to comply with all the regulations for the asbestos that is known to be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Flurry?
When would this project begin and roughly how long would it take to conclusion?
After, if the council approves it, then we have to give them a notice of award with the contract documents, then they have time to get the contracts and the bonds and everything secured, get those back to us. Once we get those back, then we'll have a pre-construction, a pre-demolition meeting and give them a notice to proceed, a specific date. So my guess would be, it's probably going to be at least 30 days, probably, before they get started. And I can update the council when we know more, once you get the contracts to them and then once we get those back, that's the first step.
Alderwoman Prather?
Also a question for Brent. Brent, what kind of notification will the people and the businesses in that surrounding area receive?
They'll have a schedule. We'll probably have Meadow Street closed and surprise some detour route set up, so we will post that on the city's website as well as probably send some notices out to the joint property owners.
Anything else? Alderman Snow?
So obviously with the chemical tool issue and all the air quality issues and this building having asbestos and it coming down, so will they have any monitoring equipment for that purpose so that we can, if residents ask, we can reassure them?
The only thing I can say for sure is they will, they have to comply with the EPA regulations for part of the demolition, which requires it to be basically a wet demolition. So it'll be sprayed to keep the dust down and keep that to a minimum, so. They will be, they'll be utilizing our water from fire hydrants in the area and stuff to do that.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion then to approve the proposal from Packard Excavating in the amount of $304,750 for the demolition of the wood frame portion of the Leith Building. This work will be paid for from the capital line item number 45-5-110-7900. All those in favor will answer yes. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls the roll.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Motions out of planning, zoning. Chairman Porter's absent this evening, so Vice Chairman McGee will read the motions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
B, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Mr. David Larson to the Belvedere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in May 2024.
Okay, we have a motion on, out of committee then, is there any discussion regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Continue, Mr. Chairman McGee.
C, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Ms. Claudia. C, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Ms. Claudia Kala to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in May twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. We have a motion out of committee. Uh, do we have any discussion regarding that, that appointment, or Ms. Claudia Kala? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Chairman McGee?
D, motion to approve the allocated amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for the downtown facade improvement grant as proposed in memo dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, from the community development planner, Gina Del Rose, funding the twelve projects identified in that memo.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, out of committee. I think, if we recall, whenever we decided that we were gonna do this, I was hopeful that, um, we would be able to, um, have some, um, comments or some suggestions made, uh, prior to the meeting. Uh, I want to thank Alderwoman Freeman for, um, contacting Gina ahead of time, I think earlier today. And, but with that being said, Gina had also given, there was a handout on everybody's desk here this evening. And, um, so, with that being said, um, I'm gonna open up to the floor. I guess I'll open it up to the floor first and see, uh, what, if any amendments or any changes that they would like to make. Alderman Snow?
Well, I would, uh, make the recommendation, we go ahead and with the reallocation of the two thousand dollars that were originally, um, set up for, for five twenty Pearl Place as per memo dated July nineteenth, we do that.
Okay, we have a motion then, and this is off of the, uh, this is off of Gina's reallocation, then, uh, and I'll read it in its entirety, or would you like to?
Go ahead.
Okay. Reallocation of the two thousand dollars originally recommended for five twenty Pearl Place is as follows. Uh, one oh six South State Street, uh, five hundred dollars of that two thousand goes there. One twelve dash one twenty-eight South State Street, five hundred dollars is allocated from the original two thousand. Uh, number three, one twenty-four Buchanan Street, two hundred and fifty dollars is allocated of the original two thousand. Two fifteen to two seventeen North State Street, uh, is five hundred dollars allocated from the original two thousand. Um, and, uh, four twenty-six South State Street, uh, is allocated, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars from the original two thousand. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion, any comments? Alderwoman Pr- uh, Freeman?
Thank you. I would like to, uh, make an amended motion, um, to exclude the eleven forty from the library and go with the, um, three thousand, one hundred and forty dollar available to reallocate, um, on our new spreadsheet that we have.
Alderwoman Freeman, if I may, are you jumping ahead at the next set of reallocations, or is that part of the first set?
This is the second set.
Can I recommend we dispose of the first one first and then do the second one to keep them clean?
Uh, Alderwoman Mahal?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to re, um, to vote on the two fifteen to two seventeen North State Street separately.
Can I ask one?
Um, that is the Boone County Realtors, and I have an interest in that, so I would like to excuse myself from voting on that one.
If the first and second agree?
Does a motioner agree?
Yeah.
Second? Second agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then we'll vote on one, two, three, and five, uh, which would be a total of fifteen hundred dollars, uh, of the origi- realic- reallocation of the original two thousand dollars that was recommended for five twenty Pearl Place. Any other, any other discussion regarding that? Alderwoman Freeman?
So if this amendment doesn't pass, then we go to my amendment, correct?
Whatever happens, you make your motion.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't we go ahead and do the five hundred, or Natalie excusing herself in that vote?
That'll be part of it.
Going to the eleven forty?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have the motion then, uh, without the two fifteen through two seven, uh, dash two seventeen North State Street. Uh, in a second, uh, any other discussion, any questions? Alder, Alderwoman Prather?
I just wanted to commend, um, Natalie for actually withdrawing herself from that vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, any, anything else? Hearing nothing else, um, we'll have a roll call vote on this. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Clerk will call the roll.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Thank you, motion passed. And so then, if we could have a motion, uh...
I think the motion to, um, reallocate the leftover five hundred dollars to two fifty, two seventeen North State Street.
Okay, we have a second. Second by Alderman Flurry?
Mr. Mayor, if the clerk can reflect that Ms. Mahal has left the council chambers.
Good. All right, any discussion on the motion in front of us? Alderwoman Freeman?
Yeah, I, I don't think the, um, the Board of Realtors should have another five hundred dollars. Um, I think that we should be, A, eliminating the library and allocating this money to businesses that are in need. Um, and I don't see the Board of Realtors being a business that is in need, and I didn't see really anything wrong with their windows when I went by there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion regarding that? Alderwoman Freeman?
Is this the only thing we're voting on? Is this five hundred right now?
It is. Yes, it is, mhm. Alderwoman Frank?
Um, could I ask Gina a question?
Sure.
Gina, did you say before that you wanted to don't, you know, have enough people that got, um, money, but you wanted them to have enough money that they would do the project and not, not do it because they didn't have enough money? Is that gonna happen with some of these people on this docket?
I do not know, but yes, that's always a concern when you don't give them the total amount they requested, that they may not follow through, 'cause they were hoping for that total amount requested. So that is a possibility for almost every single one of these, just 'cause there was not enough money to go around. I did not contact anyone to ask them that specifically, because I didn't want, I don't want that knowledge to influence my decision, 'cause when I did it, you can tell I, I'm trying to keep everyone within that sixty, sixty-five percent, you know, not playing favorites. Everyone just got treated. It's up for the council to, to decide. So I, I didn't want that influence, so I did not ask anyone.
So technically, it can, it can come back again with somebody dropping out, and then we get to reallocate?
So, the, the way the grant works, it's for a hundred and eighty days, which is six months, and then you can ask for an extension. For instance, we know just two grants from last year, Taft Insurance and Flowerbed, they didn't get their reimbursements until this fiscal year, 'cause of the extensions, due to lack of materials and stuff like that. So, the first year we did the grant, we kinda had first priority, second priority, 'cause I, I don't know if you guys remember, we had like twenty-seven applications, so like, you couldn't even spread it out evenly. Um, so, by the time all the first round projects were done and re-reimbursed, we were already into the next fiscal year, so there was no second priority. I would say, though, if any of the projects, after the awardment letters go out, if they respond, I'm not doing it, then if we get an immediate response, it could go back to council for further reallocation. If it's one of those, yeah, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, and then six months later, no, we're not, then I say it should probably just roll over into the next budget year, and you'd have more money to play with next year.
Continue.
I wanted to express, um, the Belvidere Funeral Home, they've done a lot of improvements. That's not one that's getting any money?
Oh, no, they're, they're getting one of the highest amounts. They're getting, uh, they requested seventy-five hundred, and they're getting five thousand, which is sixty-six percent reimbursement, which is why they're not on the second round of reallocations, 'cause they got such a large chunk the first round.
Okay, now I understand. I was like, wait a minute.
And that was one of the factors in my decision-making process, was the extraordinary amount of work they've done on their own in the last two years.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Um, I, I think this question is for Alderman Snow. So, the ones marked in green here, um, Dan, are the ones that are not at sixty-six percent. Um, so, what makes you think that the Belvidere Board of Realtors needs five hundred dollars more than any of these other small businesses, um, that could, that could benefit for that, especially since you're trying to, um, only work with two thousand dollars here, when these other people have like much larger projects and are in much more need of that money?
I, I would ask that we address the chair, please. But, go ahead, Alderman Snow.
Well, at this point, I'm working on the premise that staff is doing due diligence in reallocating this. Um, I don't see any big issues with that, um, in that regards. Um, taking their, their expertise and the, the amount of work they have done, and the historic preservation people have looked into this. So, I don't have an issue. If you wanna reallocate it or make a motion to reallocate it to somebody else, you're, you have that option, particularly since that line item is on the table, if you wanna come up with somebody else to reallocate it to.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Any other comments? Alderwoman Fre- Freeman?
I'm just confused about how we're doing this, because if I make a motion to, to take that five hundred and put it somewhere else, um, then we're not, I'm just confused, I guess, the whole process of how we're doing this.
Well, Alderman Snow?
If I might offer a solution, um, technically, we could table this portion, this portion of the motion. I'm just throwing that out there. I know it muddies things, but that would give, um, time for people to think about it and/or come up with a motion to reallocate to a different business, or reallocate it to several different businesses. Um, so I'm just tossing that out there as a plausible option.
So, the, the motion that's currently before the, the couns- I'm sorry, excuse me, the council, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, we bifurcated the original motion to amend. So this is a motion to reallocate five hundred dollars from five twenty Pearl Place to two fifteen, two seventeen North State Street. Um, you can certainly table the motion, you can defeat the motion, um, you can withdraw the motion, that leaves five hundred dollars hanging out there. It's up to the council how you wanna proceed. I would not recommend an amendment to the amendment, 'cause that gets, that gets messy. But you could always defeat it and make a new motion, withdraw it, make a new motion, what have you. It's up to the council.
Alderman Snow?
At this point, I don't have any intention of withdrawing the motion, um, 'cause I, again, I'm going with staff's recommendation, and I think they've done their due diligence, um, to do that. So, um, I don't know if anybody else wants to do that, or, at this point, I would say we vote it up or down, or, um, or table it. I realize, and then, at that point, um, two weeks from now, or we can have, put this on the discussion for the next committee of the whole, and discuss it, and then move it forward two weeks from now, and then make it die and come up with a reallocation, if somebody wants to go that route and can convince us otherwise to do so.
If it were to be tabled, you could actually bring it up later on tonight or in two weeks, it's up to you.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
So I think, you know, what's confusing to me at this point is the fact that, um, we went directly from not knowing how much money we're actually working with, because we don't know if the library's gonna be in on, on this money or not in on this money, because we went directly to five hundred dollars to the, um, Board of Realtors before we took the time to, um, have a motion and vote on whether we are reallocating eleven hundred and forty dollars from the library or not.
Well, if, um, might I say that if, that is a, I think, a valid point, we had to start somewhere. We had to start somewhere to be able to try and, um, allocate, uh, the money that was going, that was not gonna be received. Obviously, um, the two thousand dollars, but if that, if that is, you know, the sentiment of the council, is that, um, perhaps the five hundred dollars is at question, then I would suggest either table it or vote it down. Um, Gina?
Um, just to clarify, the memo was broken down into two reallocations. One was for two thousand dollars, because Pearl Place withdrew their application, um, because they actually received several large grants this week. So they have decided they're gonna focus on those grants and withdrew their application, so that they weren't taken away from business owners, um, which was very commendable of them. So, originally Pearl Place was recommended to receive two thousand dollars. Since they withdrew their application, their two thousand dollars needs to be allocated, and that's what the voting has been for just that two thousand dollars. Then the eleven forty from the library was a second set of recommended allocations. I didn't tie them together, because it, Pearl Place was a definite yes, needs to be reallocated, library still needs to be discussed and voted on. Uh, so I broke them up into two different allocations. So what the council has been voting on was strictly the money that was allocated for Pearl Place. Once that's voted on, then the council can decide what they're doing with the library. If they decide to not grant the library the eleven forty, then I have the recommendation for that reallocation separately. So that is why there's multiple motions, because, um, instead of combining them, we broke them down separately between the two applicants. Does that make sense to everyone? I know it's a lot of numbers bouncing around tonight.
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. Yeah, Gina, I'm sorta confused. So, on this chart, the library is going to get some money?
So, the original recommendation from staff in historic preservation was the library receiving eleven forty. I knew that one was a point of contention based on committee of the whole, which is why on the revised spreadsheet and memo you got, I have reallocation of that eleven forty going to five different properties. In case you guys did decide to vote no on that, I kind of already gave staff's recommendation, if you went that route. Obviously, you can take staff's recommendation, or, you know, you can amend it. Um, but knowing that that was a point of contention, I did go ahead and do a second set of recommendations, uh, based on that being denied. And that's what the last paragraph of the memo is.
Okay.
So, Alderwoman Frank, continue. Yes?
I have, well, um, from my notes, the, um, library won't be able to do some of these, um, changes that they want to do because of the, I don't know, what was it?
No, the, the grant they applied for was just refinishing of the doors. They won't be able to, the doors won't be functional until the grab bars, the security system, all that, and the locks are changed. So this was like step one of making doors functional. But yeah, so refinishing them won't make them functional, because there is, uh, an extensive list of other things that need to happen as well, which will come at a later date.
This is not a, a one and done, it's gonna be a long process.
For the library, yes.
This is essentially, then, a cosmetic.
The refinishing of the doors is cosmetic, um, as Mindy stated, Director Long, sorry. The library, his, architecturally and historically, is tied into the Funderburgh House, and the Funderburgh House will be open to the public soon, so they wanted to have a nice facade, um, to greet visitors, because they're so close to each other, so yes, it is primarily just aesthetic at this point, um, the functional parts will come later.
Okay, so with all that being said, how about we do this? How about we take, uh, the five hundred dollars that's a motion currently up, and let's withdraw that motion just temporarily, and then let's go to the reallocation of the eleven forty, and then put the five hundred dollars in down below after we realize what we're gonna do with that. You can get another bite at the five hundred dollars if this motion, uh, motion, uh, motioner agrees with that in a second.
I would agree to withdraw the motion and...
Okay, all right, so now, Alderwoman Prather, yes?
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, and we'll need to, we've already voted on one through five.
One.
I said one, two, three, and five, skip four.
Yes.
So, what's left is discussing whether or not we wish to
Reallocate.
Remove the eleven forty that was passed out of committee for the library, and then reallocate its money, and there's an additional five hundred dollars for 215, 217 North State Street. In light of the conflict that was, um, indicated by Alderman Mohal, I would recommend we do that one separately again, so she can leave the room for that part.
That's fine. You weren't out there long enough, we had a change of plans. Not yet, no. Okay, thank you, so, we have the reallocation of the eleven hundred and forty dollars as originally recommended for 320 North State Street. And I guess, before we reallocate it, we can decide whether or not we want to spend the eleven forty at 320 North State. So... Do we have a motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
I'll make the motion to, um, remove the eleven forty for 320 North State.
Okay, we have a motion.
It's a motion to amend or remove.
Amendment removed, do we have a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Okay, uh, Alderman Snow?
And I'm gonna vote against, um, removal of these funds for the library. Number of reasons, their legitimate, um, need, and one of the many other things is, when we talk about them being a tax levy, we have jacked them around as a group, by not allowing them to have their, um, appropriate increases over the years, and so they are working on a deficit in the overall scheme of things. And to be quite frank, we as a city have received all kinds of grant money, and yet we have the ability to tax any way we wish, particularly being home rule, but yet we don't. So, um, the fact that they're a taxing body, um, and they get an allocation, they don't have the ability to insert extra tax in order to increase their revenue to offset costs similar to this, where the city does have that option, and yet we still get grant money. So, I'm gonna vote against, um, the removal of this from the library.
And I, I just want to be, I just want to be clear that we don't have any misconception here, misrepresentation of what actually did transpire. Actually, the city, it's up to the city to go ahead and amend their tax levy, which they did. The city did that, the city amended the tax levy by an additional eighteen thousand dollars. So, that, of course, is taxpayer money, and Alderwoman Freeman is correct, uh, in that sense, that, uh, there, I don't think, uh, you know, that nobody was jacking, uh, them around in the council, I was here for those meetings, and I don't, I don't think that was, uh, the case at all. I think the case, as I recall, was that, um, there was a levy, amendment to the levy by eighteen thousand dollars, and it wasn't defined, uh, clearly in the budget that was presented. And, uh, then when there were questions about it, uh, there seemed to be a conflict. I do want to commend, uh, Mindy Long for, um, coming here and, you know, stating, uh, moving forward how we're going, but there definitely was a misconception and probably confusion regarding that. But I don't believe that anybody was jacking or trying to jack around, uh, the library, or vice versa. So, with that being said, um, I just wanted to state that for the record, if I'm wrong, feel free to correct me. Thank you, thank you. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So, although the library does have its own taxing body, I, I agree with Alderman Snow, I, I don't think we should take this money away from them. You know, the staff recommended it, the historic preservation recommended giving the library this money. Uh, you know, I understand the library has to work within a budget, I thank you, Director Long, for coming tonight to kind of tell us what your long-term plans are, and, you know, how you can properly balance your budget. I think, from my perspective, I think that instead of having, you know, to use this eleven forty that gives the library, instead of having to take it out of their operating budget, that, you know, that's gonna divert money from more books for our residents and programs, I'd rather see, if they qualify for a grant, I'd rather see them get that grant money and then have that eleven forty go to, you know, more books and more programs, so that'd be my opinion.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Um, I think that the library does have its budget and its levy. Um, unlike the businesses downtown that don't have that luxury, they can't budget on exactly how much money they're getting every year, and how much of a raise they're gonna get next year. They have to go by what their sales is, how many people they can draw into their establishment, and, um, fixing up their facade helps them do that, and it's, it's, they, they don't have a budgeted revenue like the library does. That, they don't get that paycheck every week, like you budget for your home expenses. They, um, are at the mercy of people walking into their place and spending money, and making it nicer is one way for them to be able to do that.
I will say this, that, um, I would ask myself the question, do the business owners who don't have any kind of a levy, uh, or money that's taken, the money that's given from the taxpayer to them, uh, the ones that are on a fixed income and the ones that have repairs to be made, whether it be the roof, whether it be the paint, whether it be a window, uh, whatever it may be, that they're definitely, uh, they're self-funded. And I think, to me, that's the only thing I'm asking, is weigh out, uh, you know, weigh out who actually may be in most need of that. Is it the individual that, uh, perhaps hasn't had a good year because of, uh, they haven't had any customers, they haven't been able to have any, and they rely on this to be able to make, um, their budget to make an improvement? So, I'm not, I'm not saying that one doesn't deserve it, I'm saying it needs to be prioritized, at least that's how I feel about it. It should be prioritized, is who, who in the list, uh, perhaps needs it most? And, uh, that's all, that's all I would add, you can, this is a council decision, um, and I get it, but, uh, I also happen to be here when some of the meetings, uh, prior to my taking office took place, and, uh, that's one of the things that always struck me, so... Any other comments? Any questions, any concerns? Excuse me, Attorney Drell.
Um, Alderman Freeman asked a question during public comment on the related topic, and I did have a chance to pull a resolution. We did, we never did weirdly back then, resolution two thousand ninety-seven dash twenty nineteen, um, which created the facade downtown grant program. It does not specifically prohibit the granting of grants to any entity, governmental, non-governmental, or anything. What it does provide is that the, uh, program, under the program, building slash business owners are eligible for up to less than fifty percent of the actual facade improvement cost, or the maximum amount allowed by the Belvedere City Council. The mayor's common prioritization was very, uh, point, because the next sentence, if more applications are received, then current funds will allow the city reserves the right to prioritize the applications. So, obviously, it's, when it was created, they were thinking in terms of prioritization. Um, so there's nothing that specifically prohibits you from awarding it to a governmental body. Um, I would say from reading, it was probably more intended towards business, but it's not limited to business.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on the motion and second that's on the floor? Alderman Snow?
And just for clarity, at this point, we're just talking about the lack of, I hate to use this one, defunding the library, the eleven forty. It doesn't do anything for the items one through five, we're not addressing those items, just so we're all on the same boat, and, um, Ms. Mohal can stay for that portion and all that good stuff, so we're not separating anything out just yet.
That is, uh, the motion is to, is to amend to remove the eleven forty, uh, as originally recommended from 320 North State Street. Okay, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, hearing none, then, we have a motion, uh, and a second on the floor. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye when called by the clerk, and opposed, nay.
Stevens?
No.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Nay.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Nay.
Four in favor?
Motion passed.
No, it's tied, it's tied.
There's eight.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well... I'm gonna vote aye.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion passed to amend to remove the eleven forty, and, uh, we'll have the reallocation, items number one, the allocation of the eleven forty will be at, uh, 106 South State Street for two hundred and fifty dollars. Number two, uh, 112 dash 128 South State Street, uh, allocation of, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, number three, 124 North State Street, uh, reallocation for a hundred and forty dollars. Uh, item four, we'll wait on that one, I guess? That's the one, uh, yeah. Item five, 426 South State Street of two hundred and fifty dollars, one, two, three, and five. Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Snow, uh, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Mohal. Any comments, any questions, any discussion? Alderwoman, Alderwoman Prather?
Uh, several years ago, um, back when we had the Riverfront Development Committee, and one of the items that the Riverfront Development Committee was in charge of was the extension of the bike path through the downtown area. Um, one of the objectives was to get a path established underneath the State Street Bridge. In order to do that, we needed a, an easement from the property owner at 106. And through our negotiations, we were never able to come to an agreement to acquire that easement. Um, and, um, we do have easement across the now Salvation Army property. Uh, of course, the path has already been improved, uh, to the west of State Street, um, but as of now, we still have no easement provisions either underneath the State Street Bridge, uh, from the 106 property, or adjacent to that, on the Salvation Army property.
Maybe moving forward, um, you know, we might be able to get some more cooperation.
Hopefully.
Alderman Snow?
And since that topic is brought up because of this, is that something that, in theory, we could use eminent domain to pursue, or no? Or is that something we wouldn't want to do for something like that?
I defer that to the city attorney.
Legally, yes. You could legally do that. If you want to go there.
You know, I, I think you could legally, I don't, I think, uh, you know, we had, had a little bit of success with the Logan Avenue project on the individuals that, on the individual that, uh, did not want to, uh, work with the city and wanted to tie that up over, what was it, a foot and a half of property? And, uh, instead of, uh, going the eminent domain route, I went a different route, and, uh, I was successful with that. I certainly would, you know, wouldn't recommend that we do that. Uh, we're talking about a business owner here that's been in this community for probably thirty years or more, and, uh, that wouldn't be something that I would probably want to do. Uh, no, I, I understand, but, uh, so, um, with that being said, we have, uh, what do we have here, one, two, three, and five? So, is there any other discussion about that? Okay, hearing none, uh, then all those in favor will signify by saying, or will, uh, vote, uh, aye, when called, uh, by the clerk, and any opposed, nay?
Marcia has a question.
What, I'm sorry, Marcia, you're in my blind spot.
Okay, Mayor, so, what we're really voting on is, like, 106 South State is gonna get an additional seven fifty, right? Five hundred from the two thousand and another two fifty from the eleven forty?
So, the, you already voted for the five hundred, so this would be the vote for the additional two fifty on top of the five hundred?
Okay.
All of these will be in addition, Alderwoman Freeman?
Okay, um, so then, this makes everybody pretty much hit sixty-six percent?
It would make, um, 106 South State Street a hundred percent of the original request, fifty-four, fifty-four percent of the revised request. It would make 112, 128, South State Street, uh, forty-three percent. Um, their original project was sixteen thousand, so, they're, they're just not gonna be able to hit that sixty-six, because their cost was so high to begin with. Um, 124 North State Street would bring it up to fifty-seven percent. Uh, 124 Buchanan Street would bring it up to, uh, well, the previous vote brought it up to fifty-eight percent, they weren't, um, on this one. 124 North State Street, which wasn't on the previous one, but this one would bring it up to fifty-seven percent. Um, and then 426 South State Street would bring it up to fifty percent. So, still not quite to the sixty-six, uh, but as close as we could get it. And then obviously, the, the two, um, that you have, that after this vote you still need to vote on would be a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars to see how you see fit with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, we were about ready to call the roll, I believe, all those in favor, uh, will signify, uh, will say aye, and any opposed, nay?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed. And for the record, please show that Alderwoman Mohaw has left and left the chambers before this vote. So, with that being said, we have item four. We have a 215 through 217 North State Street for a total of $750 that is left on this allocation.
And Mr. Mayor, the council could choose to allocate towards that entity or any entity they wanted to.
That's right.
Make whatever motion you want to make.
I agree. So you have $750 out there, and you can see fit to solve a riddle. Alderwoman Freeman.
I would, I would make a motion to give up to the $1,200 for the 106 South State.
The $750 that's remaining?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is that correct?
Gina, maybe you can do some quick math. With the amount that we've already approved for them, which was 750, that would take them to 2,0250? I think in...
So they're, they're useful and an extra... An extra 1,841 after the potential 2,250. My bonus very complimentary there was me.
And while she's doing it, the reason why I ask the question is our program only allows us to reimburse up to 50%.
Yes. So their potential 100% reimbursement would be $4,091.
Okay, 300.
So far, what we're going on is 1,500 plus 750. So it leaves the possible 1,800 left to make it 100% reimbursement.
We only ought to reimburse 50%. You're going to reimburse up to 50%.
Yeah, that is, that would be...
She's talking about the 50%.
100% of the 50%, okay, I'm sorry.
100% of the, of the possible reimbursement.
Right. And also, I think there was an additional quote that was given...
That is the initial quote.
Okay. And that was, I don't know if you touched upon that, but during COVID and what have you, it was my understanding they were not able to get bids on any of that work. They were not able to get a contractor to come out. Is that right, until recently?
Correct. His application did cite the power washing, the repainting, and his desire to do that, but was unable to get the quote. So the quote came in late, but his original application that was turned in in time did outline all of that stuff as part of the project he wanted to do. So when I did the first initial possible reimbursement, it was just on the invoice, the quotes received, not the narrative. So he was able to get that additional quote to back up the narrative he submitted.
Thank you for explaining that. Alderman Flurry.
Right. So if I understand this correctly, the original recommendation was 1,500. Now we just already approved another 750. So they requested 2,250 reimbursement, and that's what we've already approved now. So we shouldn't give them, and that's already at the 50% of their 100%. So we can't give them any more money. And that's what they requested, right?
So right now, he's at 100% of what was originally requested. Again, it was kind of that gray area. He submitted the application in time that had the full narrative and drawings of everything he wanted to do. He just didn't have the quote from the painters because during, like, many of the applicants had a hard time getting two quotes alone, or one alone, or the two. So the additional money would be going towards the quote for the repainting that came in after the packets were sent out to everyone. So it was in the narrative. It just wasn't, didn't have the quote attached to the narrative. So yes, 100% of the roof quote has already been awarded, but nothing from the paint quote has been awarded. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have a motion to allocate the 750 that's remaining to 106 South State Street. I don't know if we see the second one.
We do now have a second.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Alderwoman Freeman.
Thanks. So here's the thing about SS Subs. They have been here for decades. They run a good family business. They have awesome sandwiches. And people that have lived here and then moved away from here actually come back to Belvedere for their sandwiches. They actually draw people that, here, that may come for a sandwich and then stay for other things. So they're a really, a really good asset for Belvedere.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Alderman Flurry.
Yeah, I agree. SS Subs is delicious, and I love going there and eating there. And they have, for sure, the best subs. But I don't think it's fair then to reallocate. If we're not going to give the 750 to the Realtors, I don't think it's fair to take all 750 and just go to 106 when there's 14 businesses that are just as important to the community. So if you want to spread that out, I'm all for that. If we want to give a little more to SS Subs, great. But there's other, you know, there's, like I said, 14, I guess there's just 12 now. 12 other businesses that also need that reimbursement. So I would just say, if we're going to spread the 750, it should be equally, not all, to SS Subs.
Gina, can you tell us what percentage this would put them at then? So that we don't have any misunderstanding?
For SS Subs?
Yes.
It would be with the secondary quote added to at 73%. So they would be higher than the majority of the other ones.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor will, Alder, I'm sorry, Alderman Stevens?
I just want to make sure we're clarifying what we're voting on.
Okay.
So I don't vote on the wrong way.
So the motion is to grant the $750 of reallocation based upon the quote of 3682 that was added to the SS Subs reasoning, under their column of reasoning. That would be given, presented to them at 106 South State for $750. Is that right? Okay. So all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal? Oh, not present. Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
Nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Four in favor?
I vote aye. I vote aye.
Five in favor?
No.
Oh, you vote no?
He doesn't get to vote.
He doesn't need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, oh, five, okay, yes. I apologize.
Four in favor?
Okay. Motion, motion passed.
So, Mr. Mayor, it is now, I think, time to vote upon the motion as amended out committee with respect to the downtown facade revised grant reimbursements, which results in the allocations originally recommended for 520 Pearl Place being eliminated. The allocations originally recommended for 320 North State Street being eliminated. With the allocations discussed in July 19, 2021 memo from Planner Gina Del Rose being approved, with the exception that 215, 217 North State Street would not receive any additional reimbursements. And instead, 106 South State Street, we received total additional reimbursements of, let's see, 575, $1,500.
Okay. Should we also add for the allocated total of $19,290? That hasn't changed?
That's correct. That has not changed.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
The motion committee has amended.
Okay, motion as amended. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
I don't know what the motion is.
No. I don't either.
Can I read it again?
The motion as amended is to approve the grant program that came out committee with amendments that eliminated the funding for Pearl Place. And eliminated the funding for 320 North State Street, which was the library. The total of $3,140 between those two was allocated, $1,500 to 106 South State Street, which is SS Subs. 112 to 128 South State Street is seeing additional $750. 124 Buchanan Street, an additional $250. 426 South State Street, an additional $500. And 124 North State Street, an additional $140.
I apologize. How many votes did I sit out for outside? More, so ju...
And with those amendments, with this motion, the allocated amount is still the total that we started with, $19,290. So it's with the changes that the city attorney had stated. So where are we at with the roll call vote?
I'm going to start over.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Actually, for the reallocations, the funds that were taken away should, may or may not have a part to, where they were reallocated to?
The only one she didn't have a part on was the one that was originally considering the, the Board of Realtors.
But was she present through the vote group that...
No, she was not.
Should she have been?
That's up to her.
I didn't get called back in. I didn't know we were voting on something else. That's why I was a little lost here. So was there a vote to reallocate some funds to 106 South State Street that I did not take part in?
There was, mhm.
Yeah, because the vote to amend the Realtors, which you wanted to sit out, rightfully so, was like a combination vote of not really allocating, reallocating. I think that's where the confusion came from, when you didn't come back inside. Because it was a dual thing.
Should we recall that? Can we recall that?
It'd probably require a motion reconsider from somebody present in the room that voted in favor of the amendment. Do you vote in favor?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, then, to reconsider.
No, I was not. Sorry. Either one of us was in, yes, vote. And require either Frank Freeman or McGee and Stevens.
To reconsider?
To reconsider.
Yes.
Your Honor, am I not able to vote on the reallocation of the funds that came from, that were voted on for 106 South State after the Boone County Realtor vote?
No, you would be entitled to vote on that if...
I thought there was already a vote for that.
We have a reconsideration.
Well, all right. So there's, let me back up for a second. There's nothing to prevent another motion to amend if you saw fit. But, well. It's getting very messy.
Yeah, it is getting very messy. And that's kind of what I was afraid of when we started. Alderwoman Mohaw?
My intent was only to sit out on voting for the Boone County Realtor portion. I thought I would be included on any reallocations of any funds, if there were still some. So that's...
Understood.
Thank you.
So who needs, who's eligible to reconsider?
Well, so, and again, the motion reconsider, because this is not a final vote, it creates the promise, or everything would have to lie over for two weeks. And I haven't seen that, actually, in a motion to amend out of this council. I'd have to play with that a little bit. So that everybody's on the same page. The monies that were originally allocated for 215, 217 North State Street by amendment have essentially all been allocated to 106 South State Street. And that is part of the motion that's on the floor right now. We have not yet voted on that motion.
That's true.
If somebody wished to make a further motion to amend, they could do that.
Alderman Snow.
I posed a question. What would we amend it to, other than it was for the exact same thing?
That's up to the council.
Is that, is that a fair assumption, that that's what we would be looking at doing?
Unless you wanted to reallocate money to some other entity, yes.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So we're already partially way through this vote, and we can actually stop the vote and amend the motion? I feel bad, Natalie, that you didn't get called back in, and there was that confusion of, basically, it was kind of like a dual vote. But I think that it was four to three, and had you voted no, I think the mayor indicated he would have voted aye and broken the tie that way anyway. So I'm not sure that, I'm not going to say your vote wouldn't have mattered, but you know what I mean.
So?
I'm just not sure this is all necessary.
Well, I wasn't privy to the conversation. I couldn't hear everything out there. So I don't want to make a motion without hearing everything that was said here before, since I was not in the room.
So where are we at here?
We are, we're voting on all the amendments as, or the ordinance as amended.
Okay. With the total? And where are we at?
Freeman said aye. McGee said aye. Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed. And, you know, I want to, I want to apologize to Alderwoman Mohaw because I know you did leave the room. And I guess it falls upon my responsibility to get you back in here. And we didn't do that, so...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And in the future, then, we'll make sure that we do a better job of that, so... Okay. So motion out of public safety, Chairman Stevens?
Motion to accept the donation of $1,500. Check 601-888-216 from Gordon and Linda Neese for expense, for expenses with the... from Gordon and Linda Nice for expense, for, for expenses with the renovation of the leaf patrol less lethal room.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor to accept the donation of fifteen hundred dollars from Gordon and Linda Nice for the expenses with renovation of the patrol less lethal room. All those in favor will answer yes, any opposed, no, when their name is called.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, thank you, motion passed. And item F, uh, Chairman Stevens?
Motion to accept the cash donation of twenty dollars from Harry Smith on behalf of the United States Deputy Sheriff's Association.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, um, all those in favor, uh, will signify by saying aye. The, any opposed, nay, when their name is called.
Mahal?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, thank you, do we have a motion to adjourn, that's it? Motion to adjourn by Alderman Flurry, do we have a second by Alderwoman Prather? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, we'll adjourn that for the record at nine ten PM. Thank you, everybody.